All right, we will call this November 18th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Polis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandy Eber.
Here.
Daniel George.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve. That'll take us on to disclosures. Any of the commission have anything to disclose? Seeing none, takes us to our next item, which I would ask for a motion to hear item F5. That would be a non-public hearing presentation on the capital improvement budget. And we would hear that prior to the consent agenda. That motion was made by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Any opposed to that motion? Hearing none, can we please have staff presentation on case 2024-0129?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. Before the Planning and Zoning Commission this evening is the annual review of the capital improvement budget and five-year capital improvement plan. The planning department has reviewed the proposed budget, and several of these projects are located across the municipality under the purview of areas with adopted comprehensive district or neighborhood plans to include East Anchorage, Fairview, Hillside, Spinnard Corridor, the UMed, and West Anchorage District Plan. We do recommend approval of the budget and have provided three suggested findings on page two of the attached staff packet. And with that, I will turn it over to the OMB.
Would anyone from OMB care to speak to this item? This is, uh, we did just have the work session, but we do typically give you time to speak to it on the record. And please state and spell your name for the record.
Through the chair, my name is Ona Brause, O-N-A-B-R-A-U-S-E. I am the Director of the Office of Management and Budget. I'd like to thank the commission for allowing our presentation during the work session, and it was good conversation to sort of be in front of this commission for the first time and understand the direction that you were looking at things, particularly in regards to the capital program for the municipality. If there are any additional questions from the presentation, feel free to let me know, either now or at a later date. And we really appreciate the opportunity to present the budget to you for the input from the body.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, what is the will of the body? Never mind. I guess we will... No, no public hearing. No, they're up, yeah, there is no public hearing. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion recommending approval. Our Commissioner, Commissioner Ron, would you like to state your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Anchorage Assembly of the proposed 2025 capital improvement budget and 2025 to 2030 capital improvement program.
And that is seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I appreciate representatives from the administration and various departments being here this evening to answer any questions the commission may have, noting that we did have a healthy and robust work session prior to me making this motion. We do have a few findings of fact presented to us. I agree with all of them and would incorporate them for the record, items A1 through 3 and B in our draft resolution. A few additional comments, recognizing that budgeting is a challenging process at the municipal level. I personally believe as Commissioner that there's been a good faith effort to do the best that all can with the limited funds we have available and the sources of revenue that our community does or doesn't have. We heard earlier about removal of state funding to the tune of $100 million back in 2014. If you do the simple math, over 10 years, that's now a billion dollars that our community doesn't have that we did previously, something that I ponder as a resident of this citizen, how we pay for the things that we need to sustain and improve our quality of life. So, thank you all to those who prepared this. I intend to support the motion.
Anybody else wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, we will call for the vote.
Commissioner Strike?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That motion passes. Now, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been moved and approved. Is there anyone wishing to pull any items for discussion? Hearing seeing none, we will call for the, anybody opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we, this takes us to the public hearing portion. I will read the procedures by which the public may speak to the commissions as meetings. After staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony issued. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules and procedures. A petitioners, including him or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes, and individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. Any party of interest wishing to appeal shall first file with the planning director within seven days of the commission's decision made on the record a written notice of intent to appeal in accordance with AMC 2103050A4A. Commission recommendations to the Anchorage Assembly are not appealable. Following approval of the written findings of fact and decision, any party of interest may within 20 days file an appeal by filing a notice of appeal and paying the appeal fee and deposit in accordance with 2103050. The notice of appeal must be filed with the planning director on the form prescribed by the municipality. If the appellant is not the applicant, the appellant's notice of appeal shall include proof of service on the applicant. Now, can we please have the staff presentation on case 2024-0124?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Daniel McKenna Foster. I'm a planner in the long-range planning division of the planning department. Case before you is Assembly Ordinance 2024-99. It was introduced by the Assembly in October. They initially waived planning commission review, and I just want to note, the review was waived by the Assembly when this item was introduced. It appears as a case, but the Assembly sponsors were not petitioning the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were not expecting to appear, were not asked to appear. So, this information is presented by staff to give the commission an opportunity, excuse me, to ask questions or take action if desired. And there will be two other ordinances like this. They're probably going to come to you in a different way. We're still just trying to figure out how to do that in the right way, so it gives everybody the time they need to review everything and the appropriate sharing of information. Do you have anything else you want to add? So, what are special limitations? Special limitations are a tool in Title 21 that allow policymakers, decision-makers to apply special limitations on a rezoned case. They can do four potential things: limit residential density, prohibit structures or uses, require compliance with design standards, require compliance with a site plan, require construction installation improvements, including public improvements, oh, five things, excuse me, or impose time limits for taking subsequent development actions. So, it's a pretty powerful tool that can do a lot of things. There are many types of SLs that, over time, appear to have been incorporated into Title 21. So, it's a pretty old tool, and we all know that Title 21 has sort of been adding things and dealing with issues over time. A big one, public meetings and site plan reviews, those are now sort of established in 2103 and 2105 for uses. And we'll get into it later, but it's interesting, if you look at different SLs around town in different areas, you see sort of different trends in the way the SLs were happening. And I think that really reflects that, at that time, the code maybe didn't have what people wanted, and since then, the code has been revised. Another thing is access requirements. You see a lot of that on Muldoon Road, where they say, can't access this, have to access here, and a lot of those things are now regulated or managed through site plan reviews and agency comments. And then, density standards and density requirements, so, and that's both limiting density or mandating density. Some of these are now the R3A and R4A zones. That's another big one. You see a lot of rezones from R3 to B3 in Midtown, really worried about the loss of residential capacity, and then, over time, they eventually said, okay, R3 and R4A are supposed to be the zones that are fulfilling that need while also providing that flexibility. One thing, when you map them, you see there are indeed a lot of SLs that are in high-slope areas, especially in Eagle River and the Hillside area. In fact, all of R10, I think, is SLs. And so, we referred this to the Geotechnical Advisory Commission for discussion. We gave it to them in October, and they'll be discussing just the concept at their November 26th meeting next week. And really, we asked them, are there rules in building codes now that address the original intent of these SLs? Because you'll see a lot of these, they talk about slope, they talk about erosion, they talk about water, and some of that maybe now is in building code, some of it maybe now is in zoning code in 2107. So, let's dig into the exciting, interesting pieces here. This is, as you look through, you do see some of these themes, and in the Muldoon area, there are a lot of SLs that speak specifically to uses. And so, this is just a few examples, and you'll see, I mean, there are lots and lots of SLs all over Muldoon. This is just a snapshot. But every one of these is sort of having a particular set of uses which is allowed. And we'll get into that a little bit later, but it's kind of confusing, right? If you're a property owner or looking to buy a property or use a property, you think, oh, great, it's B3, I can do X, Y, and Z. And then, you go, oh, it's B3SL, so I have to go find what is allowed, what isn't allowed, make sure everything's up to date. So, it really is quite fascinating. You can spend a lot of time digging into this, and it's really sort of peering into kind of the thinking of the time. And you'll see, these range from 1984 to basically 2018. In Hillside area, generally, a lot of them deal with slopes, a lot of them deal with site plan reviews, but a lot of them deal with other things, too, like the way things should look, special types of easements, permitted uses and structures. For example, there's one, it's an R3SL, and it says you can only have single-family homes. And, you know, density is limited to three dwellings per acre, six dwellings per acre. So, that's generally, a lot of them are like this, but not all of them like this. Every SL is sort of unique in its way, but there are some interesting trends. Midtown area, a lot of reviews and uses. This, I got to thank Paul for this, he pointed this out, that almost all of the ones here, they call for a sort of public meeting or administrative site plan review, which was covered in subsequent versions of the code. Maybe that use now in the use table says, this needs an admin site plan review. Or, the entire code says, when you do this type of development, you always have to have a public meeting. Back in maybe the 80s, 90s, 2000s, those standards weren't in place. But again, this, and this is also an interesting area with thinking about, as this area, as Anchorage was moving south, and you had all this sort of unrestricted or R3 land converting to maybe a more flexible category, people, and people were worried, like, how do we control what's happening here? And SLs were the tool they were kind of using, whether they were successful or not is another question. And actually, R4A is a really interesting one. I know we talked about that about two years ago. Initially, people thought, well, maybe we'd have R4A be a B3 with an SL. That's the Archives property, and we can get exactly what we want. So, that's an instance of where R4A was now fulfilling the role of what the SL, a B3SL, might have previously. Eagle River, a lot of stuff about slopes and vegetation and sort of rivers and preventing impacts and that sort of thing. But also, a lot of stuff, too, limiting development or density. This one on the left, no more than 230, or 320 dwellings may be constructed, that's on the whole site. Sometimes they say per acre, sometimes they say per tract, sometimes they have other types of restrictions. This is one of the more recent SLs. This is Benson up here, and this is Arctic. This is a B3SL and an R4SL for a manufactured housing community. And you can see, this is where there's a lot of design standards. It says the way the building should be oriented, what should be allowed there, it should have a, what type of environment it should be. So, it's a really prescriptive SL, and it covers both B3 and R4. And this one's interesting, because a lot of this also did end up, these regulations or these, the specific pieces that were being regulated, did end up in R4A or the site access code, or R3A, or in parts of code that no longer apply. So, it, and sometimes it does feel like, maybe this was a tool that people were using to meet a need, and now, maybe we have a different tool. So, what are the issues with SLs? I think the big one, especially for the department, is transparency. It's hard for people to find them. We often get calls, and people say, hey, I found this lot, it's a B3SL, what is it, what does that mean? You know, where do I go? In some cases, you can look on the Muni website, and you can find the link to the ordinance, which is great. GIS has done a great job on that. In other places, it's not listed, even on our own internal side of the GIS. It just hasn't been uploaded, or it's not clear what it is. And so, in some cases, we have to go up to the front and get out those massive big maps and look at something that was printed probably 20 years ago, and find it, and then go back and find the ordinance. So, for us, you know, we can do that, but for the average person, it's very difficult to figure out what exactly this means. They don't show up in a title search. They might apply in irregular ways, like, you might, oh, SLs are about uses. Well, sometimes they're about uses, sometimes they're about density, sometimes they're about access, sometimes they're about design standards. Every single one is different. Some are very simple, some are one or two lines, some are 10 or 11 pages. Consistency, some SLs apply to sections of code which are long out of date. I think common ones, they say, oh, you have to go through administrative site plan review according to 2145, a section of code that doesn't exist anymore. You might say, oh, well, we have the same public process, it's just numbered differently, possibly, right? Say you have an SL from 1985, it refers to a piece of code that existed in 1985, but then you have to go back and look at what that code said for that particular process in 1985, because that code could have changed between 85 and 87, right? Or 85 and 90. So, that's just another piece where, sometimes even a very simple one, it ends up with a piece of code that maybe has changed, or maybe doesn't exist, or maybe is now taken over by something else. And then fairness, there are some SLs that limit housings for reasons that might not be related to health, safety, and welfare. Health, safety, and welfare, of course, is the sort of legal rationale for zoning, established by Supreme Court in the 1926 Euclid versus Hamblor case. Here are just a couple more examples that are just kind of really hard to deal with. This, with the dotted line, this is an SL. It crosses multiple properties, so it results in a weird split-zone lot. And the SL actually says that 100-foot strips of these properties. So, it only regulates a very tiny piece of adjacent properties. So, these are two different lots. So, that's a complication. Here's another one. This, I think, might be the smallest SL. This is Spinnard and where the railroad tracks cross. It's this tiny little SL, maybe it's 7,000 square feet, and it just regulates this one little part of the building, which, again, is a weird situation to be in. What happens if that building gets demoed, and somebody's building a new building, and then somebody says, oh, actually, for this, these four closets, you have to do a site plan review, or something like that. This, I think, is another one of the smallest ones, is 36th and Lake Otis. This tiny little 12,000-square-foot lot is B1ASL, and it says you have to have a non-public hearing site plan review to change it. And I include this just because I think in general, the zoning code, or the code, says that you shouldn't be rezoning anything less than 1.5 acres, or something, maybe it's 1.75 acres. So, you end up with these little pieces of zones that don't apply anywhere else and have all these unique kind of characteristics. Another thing, I kind of mentioned this, is people can go to the map, and code does say, it has to be listed, R3SL. Code doesn't say necessarily that you have to be able to find the ordinance immediately. And this is something we're already working on, the director has kind of put us to work on making sure that we have everything categorized, cataloged. That will be happening. But again, for right now, if you are, maybe want to buy this property or look at this property, and you go to any publicly available source, you cannot find it. And it would be very hard for somebody to find it. Where even to begin looking for that without calling one of us in the planning department? And we can find it, but for this one, we'd probably have to go to the front and dig through, you know, the massive old plats, which, again, we're glad to do, it's, we're happy to do it. But for the average person who's just looking for transparent information, it's very complicated. Here's another one, another B3SL. Let's see, these are just some examples, and I'll go through them much more quickly. This is what I'm talking about, it's referring to 2145 sections of code that maybe are somewhere else now, maybe not. This is another really interesting one. This is from 1997, it's an R3SL. The R3SL, you know, R3 is a high-density zone, it's right next to the base, great place to have housing. It only allows single-family dwellings and six dwellings per acre. It also requires that you have to have a mix of developments, and most of it should be single-family. And each single-family dwelling shall have a minimum size of 12,000 square feet and a two-car garage. So, that is what the law says, if you're building in this area, you have to have a very prescriptive type of house. Again, it's, you look at it and say, why is it R3? It could just be R1, essentially, right? Here's another one, R3SL. This is really about overall density for the tract. So, you know, these are actually pretty small lots, and this is an interesting one, because this might be in a case before we had conservation subdivisions. So, they wanted maybe smaller lots, they wanted a little more compact housing, maybe they wanted to save this green space, but there was no tool in code to do it, so they ended up with the SL that sort of establishes that for them. Because I think these property sizes, yeah, this is a 2,991-square-foot lot. So, there are other ways to do that, excuse me. Here's another one, has a lot of really complicated stuff. 600 square feet of usable open space per unit. It also talks about you can't block certain views, a minimum of 20% of overflow parking. So, again, and just for one site. It's really complicated, and again, every single one is different in most cases. ROSL, I don't even remember. This one, again, it's got a lot of complicated uses and general principal structures, what they should look like, how should, you know, that sort of thing. This one, another one, it requires a special setback on this side, I think, for the benefit of these property owners. This one is a fairly recent one, this is 2017. The zoning MAC amendment says maximum dwelling units is 30, and commercial uses in manufactured home communities are prohibited. That's the kind of thing where it's hard to make a good case to say why this site would not be appropriate for a certain type of housing, right? When housing is just housing. This is a really interesting one, SL from 1991, this is Northwood. This is over by Spinnard. Spinnard Road is up here, but the Spinnard Rec Center is down over here. So, basically, it said the number of dwelling units is limited to, I think it says 180, and that was down from 200, so you can see the negotiation that was going on. Maximum 35 foot, so pretty limiting what can be done on this, pretty prime site. Interestingly enough, you look back, in I think 2014, somebody proposed 680 units here. Great spot. I think it's in a transit supportive corridor, maybe, or at least parts of it. Anyway, they wanted to change the zoning, they wanted to rezone to R4. Planning and Zoning Commission denied it, they said, no, R3SL is fine. And again, there's probably a lot going on there, but it just shows that these limitations do play into sort of a bigger kind of story of how housing has been built in Anchorage. And so, you know, ultimately, they just said, okay, that's fine, we'll just rescind the case. And so, it's still a vacant lot today. And again, we can speculate, who knows if it would have gone through or not. But it is interesting that we have a big, it's something like nine acres or something, site, that somebody tried to build 680 units 10 years ago, and today, we have no units there. The main thing, and we talked more about this in the staff report, is that SLs are a tool, and in many ways, I think they're sort of like a relief valve. But it's almost like a relief valve that isn't supposed to be where you release the pressure. Because for policymakers, decision-makers, you're facing these issues, and somebody wants to change their property, and you're probably going to hear some sort of feedback that pushes in the other way. And for somebody in your old position or anybody's position, it's hard, because you think, well, this seems like a good project, but I hear that the neighbors' needs aren't being met, or there's some other environmental concern that I have, and I don't have a tool to deal with that. And I think SLs have traditionally been that tool. And so, it's a way to sort of allow something to go through that sort of, it sort of provides a compromise. There are, you know, some issues with that, and I can get into the public comments a little bit, just because in doing that, it sort of ends up with a very specialized set of regulations that are hard to find, it's difficult to manage them. And there's also a bigger question of, if you are approving a rezone that might not totally be appropriate for that area, then maybe the rezone really shouldn't be approved. Or, the other piece is that, if you're approving a rezone that implements the comprehensive plan, then the comprehensive plan already sort of calls out that that implementation zone is appropriate for that. So, you know, I see in the public comments, some people said, well, we got more flexibility, we had an R3 in Hillside where we wouldn't have been able to do it. I think my responsibility, well, perhaps that wasn't appropriate for R3, right? Do we really want R3 density or R3 standards down on Hillside? If it, if it isn't following the plan, maybe it shouldn't be approved. Because fundamentally, again, the land use plan says where things should go, this is the agreement of what's appropriate, and if a rezone isn't appropriate, then it's just not appropriate. And if, by using SLs, it can almost in some ways subvert that a little bit, because it's allowing something that maybe isn't appropriate, but with some of that compromise. So, there's a lot to it. But with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have a question from Commissioner Krishna.
Sure, I'll kick us off. So, I'm looking at the draft, and I am wondering if you can walk us through how, swapping the words "special limitations" or other, for effective clauses, what does effective clauses mean? What is different about that tool than special limitations?
Thank you, through the chair. I think the effect, the effective clause is a way to get the thing established, but it's almost like one thing that has to be done for it to be established, whereas the special limitation is something that lasts forever. For example, when the R4A lot at the Archives was passed, they passed it with an effective clause, and they said, this rezone comes into effect as soon as there's an easement recorded over Fish Creek. So, once that easement goes in, then it can go through. Versus, an SL there might have said, in the future, you know, no development can ever happen where, in this area. It's just sort of a one-time thing that fulfills a specific task or specific problem versus an SL which applies basically permanently forever regardless.
Just to clarify, when we look at rezones and we say, recommend approval subject to the conditions on pages eight or whatever, that, those conditions are what effective clauses are? That's what we're talking about?
That's a great question. I think it really depends. I would say, because I haven't been involved in that many rezones with those specific conditions, but I think it depends on what the language is. If it says, and it depends what the condition is, if the rezone is subject to the condition that the following uses be prohibited from the zone, I'd say it was an SL, but I don't, I don't...
To me, an example of the condition she would be referring to is like, one example would be, this will take effect when the plat is recorded. Those type of conditions. So, I don't necessarily think that they will. So I don't necessarily think that they would be what you're referring to, but I guess in the Fish Creek instance, it could be that this zoning will take effect if this easement were to be recorded or something, maybe a condition like that. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you're right, because it is often, it shall subject to recording in the state recorder's office. That does feel more like an effective clause. And maybe that's honestly something we could look at in terms of the specifics of the language. But I guess saying a special condition is not a special limitation, at least defined in code.
Can I ask one more question on this train of, on this line? I think, yeah, I think a little bit more information would be helpful here as to like what the bounds are for what an effective clause is. Frankly, I hadn't seen those bounds for what a special limitation was, I don't think, ever. Makes me wonder if we have been using them correctly on this commission. But I'm hoping you can spell out a little bit more what an effective clause would be.
The effective clause is listed in code as something that, actually, maybe I should back up. I think the effective clause comes into effect when the assembly is adopting the rezone. When the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends with conditions, I think that's a separate thing. But I think we can provide you a clearer answer to that. Because when I'm thinking through, in 2103, it mentions effective clauses as something that the assembly can do, whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission providing a recommendation could make conditions of the recommendation, I think a lot of those conditions would be affected through the sort of the changes that the staff and the applicant will make before it gets to the assembly. But it sounds like we probably owe you a little bit clearer explanation, maybe on paper on that.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. First question, what's the process for changing an SL? When an SL has outlived its intended life or events have changed, is there a process and what is it?
Through the chair, it's a rezone. It's the same process as a full rezone. At least in code, it says that to remove an SL, you have to go through the rezone process. I've heard there are other ways that it has been done, but I think generally in code, it just treats it as if it's a rezone to, just like any other rezone.
So follow-up would be then, for the data presented in the table in attachment C, those items were SL-proposed, removed by assembly. There's not a mechanism by which the assembly just issues an ordinance and poof, it's gone?
Well, so, I think, if I'm, sorry, excuse me, through the chair. I think some of those, the SL was sort of riding on the AO when it got to the assembly, and the assembly removed it from the AO before it got adopted. In terms of can the assembly just make the call and remove one, that is a question that I think becomes a lot more complicated than anything I can answer, because it gets into, how does the assembly do a rezone and that whole process? I don't know if you have any, yeah. So, and that, that's my wording error. But in some of those, like on the towers in Spinard, that was the, and maybe the properties down on Abbott Loop, those were, the SLs were proposed, and the assembly removed them from the ordinance, so they never got adopted.
I guess I'll just add that I have been a part of a rezone in Eagle River where a property had SLs that made development impossible. And during that time, Assembly member Bill Starr initiated a rezone of the property bypassing planning and zoning. And I happened to be a part of several emails between the assembly member and planning staff where planning staff pushed back rigorously on his effort to do rezone directly, but ultimately, he was successful in doing that. And so I think sometimes the assembly and planning staff disagree on what the assembly can do, but it has been done.
Commissioner George.
Thank you. Through the chair, so just want to make sure I get the process here correct. I've got some questions for the department, but is it the intention to take public testimony on this item and then come back to it?
Is that a question for me?
Procedurally, are we, are we opening this up to the public, or are we just?
Well, that is a good question. It's listed here under the public hearings section of our agenda, so whether that was our intent or not, I feel like that's what we're going to do. I mean, I read that whole spiel, so.
Always happy to defer to the public process. So then I'll be brief initially and maybe just ask some procedural questions. I know that when we, as a body, took up the home initiative earlier this year, there was a lot of talk about special limitations, both here in the chamber and then in our work sessions as well. I know this was considered to be, at the time, some low-hanging fruit, something that was achievable to address. And I seem to recall from one of the memos that the department provided us previously that they had identified 105 SLs that they had been able to identify at the time. I had made a request for a list of those SLs so that we could review what they are and what they do. I think it's very difficult to make a policy call on such a versatile tool in our toolbox without knowing what these all do and having a systematic approach to them. You know, it may be that most of them are outdated or really just unfair to the owners, but without a process to identify all of them, to know what we're talking about before we change our own powers. I just, I think that if that's something the department's working on, I want to make sure that I defer to them, and maybe they've got some thoughts on that, but that's kind of where my mind is going. Thank you.
I guess I just want to clarify that, that we're all understand that we're not removing SLs here tonight or rezoning any properties. We're only removing the tool, which I guess, in my words, I would characterize it as a torture tool for planners and developers. And so I guess that's what, just to clarify, that is what we're doing. That's what's up for discussion tonight.
Thank you. It may be less of a scalpel and more of a hammer, and certainly a tool that was very popular in the past. And so just knowing how it's been used in the past, I think, would be very helpful, you know, if we're going to say no more. You know, how has it been used and what might we not be able to do in the future? Thank you.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll adopt a prior commissioner's, what I understand his intent and interest to be in the form of a question back to the department. So whether it be 105 or fewer or more than that, of the SLs that the department has reviewed and taken a look at, can you weigh in on that question of what percentage of them were discouraging of development and which were in fact enabling development? So again, not looking for hard numbers, but we're hearing the word pain, but also noting that there may be some beneficial elements of these SLs at the same time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Through the chair. Yeah, I just want to reiterate that the ordinance is about stopping the tool, and the ordinance also instructs the planning department to do a comprehensive review and look through all of them. So we've already started doing that. We found a document recently that shows all the SLs from the 1980s to 2000. I think just looking at that, this, there's 545 in this list, and that's, that's a, you know, part of them, right? And that's an older document that was collected back in the day. Some of those might have been changed or not. But this document itself provides some pretty interesting context, just kind of doing some quick analysis on it. Most of the rezones were from R3. Most of the rezones were to B3, not necessarily always R3 to B3. But most of the SL limitations were about use or height or density or things like that. So we're going through the process of trying to catalog and categorize them all, but I think in general, SLs are a restrictive tool. I don't think they're, I haven't seen any case where they're used to provide something that wasn't provided before. Again, in the case of using an R3 in the Hillside area, that seems like, oh, it's making it more flexible because you're using more flexible zone. But then you look at the SL itself, and it's requiring an admin site plan review and all these other things, and density at like below what you could get in R1. So it's really tricky, but I think in general, SLs are always a restrictive tool and never really a, I don't want to say productive, but a sort of generative tool. But eventually, we will be able to get you the data to show most SLs were about this kind of thing. But the problem is because so many SLs have so many pieces attached to them, it's extremely difficult to categorize it, to say, okay, this is, you know, AO 201795. It has restrictions on use, density, access, this. And to categorize all that, it just becomes this massive document. But it's something we're already working on, and we will provide that report. And, you know, internally, when we're talking about it, what would we even do about this? We would have to look at, are these still serving a purpose or not? You couldn't just get rid of these and say, get rid of them all, because there's so many pieces that you need to look at and make sure that it's solving a problem or not solving a problem. And so that comprehensive process is going to be that. But yeah, this particular ordinance is just saying, no more going forward. But the process of removing them, that's another longer discussion.
Commissioner Pulis.
I can think of several special limitations throughout my career that were actually about self and health and weight, self, health and safety, sorry. I'm not going to sit here and list them out. I do agree that probably 90% of special limitations are not necessary. I think your guys' effort to go through, look at what's being listed, and just get rid of the ones that are already covered in code. Obviously, things have changed over the last 30 years. If it's that old and it's already covered, we should just start scraping those things. I completely agree with that. I can give you an example right now where I'm getting a variance for converting covered parking to self-storage. And there's a weird little caveat in Title 21 that says self-storage is an allowed use in industrial area, but it cannot be, it has to be at least a half an acre and can be no bigger than 10 acres. And because I'm on an 11-acre site, I have to go through a variance that then now records that we're going to propose less than take 10 acres. And because we have to do it in two phases, I don't know how else we'd be able to record that, you know, that we're going to come back and do it again. There has to be some type of document sticking around that says, otherwise, we'd have to come back again for phase two. So we're asking for approval of both, and it's going to get recorded. That's not exactly health and safety, but that's a situation where this could come up. So I just, you know, I support 90% of this. I don't think getting rid of special limitations is a good thing, though. I think there's a few spots here and there that they are a good tool. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. I think I have two questions, but the first one maybe goes back to where we started, where I think Commissioner Krishnan was asking questions about just kind of the terminology and what tools we're talking about in the box. And I'm looking at the approval criteria for rezoning, and one of them is pretty focused on the conditions on the ground, and that's the one that's, the rezone is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts upon adjacent land uses. And then it says, or such impacts shall be mitigated through stipulations. And I guess my first question is, that word stipulations in that context, what that means to the planning department and what tool that is? Because I read that, and I think like something like a special limitation. And is there, is there something else that that is maybe contemplating?
Through the chair, that's a great question. I don't have a good answer for you. I think we'd have to ask.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess I can go, another question is, I think my question is, I'm just looking for, since I don't work actively with special limitations, I'm not, you know, building things or having to deal with them, but the chair's reference to them is a torture, torture As I envision the process, it occurs to me that part of, and some of the examples you gave earlier are that, and one of the challenges we have is that a special limitation, in a sense, even though code might be revised through time and the allowable uses in a particular zone or certain limitations on development within a zone could change, but a special limitation, at least with respect to the content of that limitation, just kind of locks it in amber, whether it's 40 years or 30 years. I mean, you pointed to some that were from the 80s. And is, is part of the problem, as we're thinking about what the underlying issue is, I guess, I guess my question is, to what degree is it a function of the fact that we get stuck with stuff that's way outdated and it doesn't have the flexibility to kind of naturally update itself as the code is updated? And how much of the issues that you see do you think are a function of that kind of problem with special limitations versus other concerns?
Through the chair. I think I'll be answering the question, but if I'm, if I'm getting too far off, please correct me. Maybe we could think of a specific example that everybody's seen recently. Down on Abbott Road, there's a lot that was being rezoned from R5 to B3, right? And it also required a 2040 land use plan change. If you start seeing a lot of those, to me, that would indicate that maybe there's an issue with either people are trying to do something that's really not appropriate for that area, or maybe that the framework in the land use plan is not designating that area correctly. Because again, the 2040 land use plan is really supposed to say, look, this is kind of what we decided, we're going to have the industrial stuff over here, more housing stuff over here, this over here. And if, you know, individual property owners are saying, no, this actually makes more sense to do this, and they're getting approved, so the land use changes to the map are approved and the rezones are approved, that to me would indicate that maybe there's an underlying problem with that designation. And that designation's interesting, too, right? Because it's city center, it's industrial, and then you have this big clump of single-family and one-family. And, you know, talking with Paul, sorry to drag Paul into this, but there might have been issues with the water system there back in the day where the water system couldn't handle enough. So they designated it as one-to-family. Now, maybe that's been updated. The land use plan map still says it's not really appropriate to have it, but in these processes, those rezones are still going through, and the land use plan designation changes are still going through. So I think you're right, that's identifying that something isn't quite working and some piece of the system is not, hasn't been updated necessarily. But it could be both the plan, but it could also be the zoning, right? If, for example, say you're getting a bunch of B3 rezones, and people say, I don't want, I don't want a gas station there, right? And you're seeing that with every single one, I mean, maybe the gas station should be an administrative site plan review, or maybe it should be a conditional use. So that gets built into the zone. And so in terms of alternatives to this tool, there are many in the code. It just would take changing the code slightly differently, right? To say, okay, if this uses a big issue, maybe it should be a conditional use. If this is a big problem in this area, maybe it shouldn't be designated one-to-family in the land use plan. Maybe it should be designated something else. So I think that got to what you're asking, but let me know if it didn't.
I think, I think it did to a degree, and I think part of, part of your challenge in answering my question is that there, my question maybe wasn't totally clear even in my own head, so I think you're, I think you're helping move me along, so thanks for your response.
Commissioner Krishnan.
Yeah, and maybe this is another very broad question that's not really possible to answer, but I'm wondering if you can walk us through how the department is thinking about existing SLs, if there are 500 of them out there. Is there, and I'm not asking for necessarily action items right now, but just, is there talk of doing a review to find out if some change or having some percentage of them removed through some action is beneficial? Is it really just a, you know, we leave them until there's some development or a property owner comes forward with some desired change? Could you talk about how you're thinking about that? Because, you know, I think when we talk about fair application of the code, I do worry a little bit or wonder a little bit about a tool that is used this year and then goes out of use, right? Does somebody get an opportunity this year that they didn't get last year? What does that look like over time? I'm hoping you can talk to us a little bit about that.
Yeah, through the chair, I'll answer, then I'll defer to the director because she might have a bigger, higher-level picture. Yeah, so, you know, in the AO, it sort of instructs us, and the AO hasn't been adopted yet, but we're just thinking about it. And it seems like good practice anyway to go through and catalog every single SL that exists. And to Commissioner Pulis's point, I agree, there are many that are very clearly related to health, safety, and welfare. I mean, a lot of the stuff on the slopes, a lot of stuff in Eagle River that is saying you can't build within 70 feet of a stream, like there was environmental protection stuff that went in, because that's before we had that section in 2107. Or that's before building codes regulated, whatever. And that's one of the main reasons we brought to the Geotechnical Advisory Commission, to ask if, you know, and what we asked them is, if these went away, do you, would you feel there was a health, safety risk in these areas? there was a health, safety risk in these areas? Could people build a safe building in R10 without a special limitation there, without whatever process? And we're talking with them about that next week. Everybody should come join us. And in terms of how to move to the next step in the equal application, I mean, the first step will have to be looking at each one of them and trying to figure out, is this really addressing a health, safety, welfare need? Or is it addressing something else, right? Because we also have that other unfair application where you might have an R4 lot here where somebody can do something and an R4 here lot, lot here where they can't do something. So it's, it's going to be a very big task, but I think key paramount to that is making sure that nothing or any recommendation to remove anything is not creating an unsafe condition. I think that's how we said it to GIC. Would this, removing this create an unsafe condition? I don't know if you wanted to weigh in.
Through the chair. My name is Melissa Bab. I'm the Planning Director for the Anchorage Planning Department, as you are all aware. But I think just to summarize that, I did direct the planning department to start investigating these, because it looked like an unequal and uneven application of the zoning code. And there are so many of them, and they are all so different from each other. So I was curious to see what they contained. And in the little bit of investigating that we have done so far, it does seem that a lot of the content of current SLs, especially the older ones, are duplicative of what actually exists in code regulations now, either via IBC, IFC, Title 21, or all of the different, the various regulations that are governing, governing development. So if these are in place now all over town, and they require a rezone in order to remove them, it seemed like a good idea to start maybe, maybe cleaning those up as we discover which ones are not related to health and safety, in hopefully in preparation for more development, more housing, just smoothing the way for, for higher density development in some areas.
Thank you, through the chair. I appreciate the comments about SLs many decades ago having to do with health, safety, and welfare in ways that are not, were not protected at the time, but are now provided for in code, state law, federal laws that have passed since those days. Some things that come to mind, contaminated sites, institutional controls that are ongoing. Those are excellent reasons to have limitations for undevelopment that might not otherwise appear in code. Our code has greatly evolved since a lot of these were put in place shortly after unification of the borough. I think there's a lot of interest among the body here, it appears, to delve into how many of these are still relevant and whether they're a useful tool. It seems maybe premature to restrict this power that the body has without knowing how it has been used or how it might still be valuable. The, you know, we talked about in some of the SLs limiting size of homes, garages, that sort of things, that reads like a plat note or a CCNR from an old development that's just carried forward. That's what it seems like those were doing at the time, and it makes me wonder, you know, the city can put a limitation on a property for development, but so can a private owner as well. And they can put covenants, and they can restrict development. I see it all the time in title reports. And by day, I help folks buy homes, and I see title reports, and we look on the tax assessors database, and there was some public testimony submitted that requested that the SLs be tied into KAMA and be searchable. And I think that's a fantastic idea, because these are currently binding SLs. I think it would be great to see where, if you looked at any property on the ARC GIS or on the tax assessors database, it would say what the SL is, and you could click the link, or you could look at it, or you could, it would say how to go right to it. I think anything we can do to make that more transparent would be fair. But also, it seems like there needs to be a systematic review of all the SLs that are out there, and this appears to be the appropriate body to do that at some point. You know, the Constitution and the state statutes give boroughs and cities the authority to plan, regulate land, land use, and plat land. And removing the ability to put in place those stipulations might be premature without knowing all of the ways it can be valuable or helpful or useful. Thank you.
That didn't sound like much of a question to, I just want to clarify for you guys that this section of the meeting is for questions of staff. So let's, because we are going to have a public hearing, at least. I don't know if anyone's going to talk to us, but, so questions for staff right now. Commissioner Krishna.
Yes, I understand we're making a recommendation to the Assembly, because they've already introduced this item. Is that correct? What's our deadline by which we have to make that recommendation? If we don't do it at this meeting, will we get another opportunity before the Assembly hears this item?
If you decide to make a recommendation, you may do so at the next meeting, if you would like to wait.
If I could add to the chair, the, the item is scheduled to go back to December 17th. So the Assembly, or PCC has a meeting on the second and a meeting on the ninth.
Commissioner Winchester.
Do you know offhand how many rezoning special limitations have been used in, say, the last five-year period? Is this something that's been happening quite a bit currently?
Through the chair, in the packet, we have a list. It's, in the last five years since 2019, I don't know, I'm going to guess maybe four or five. I, I don't know, I could give you a more precise answer. There's, the numbers are in here. But then there are also some that, where the SL was proposed and it was removed by the Assembly. But I could, you know, the Spinnard Tower rezone, some of the Abbott Loop rezones, a couple in Eagle River, actually, have happened recently. Yeah, those are the top three I can think of in the last two years.
And would you say in those instances, it was helpful to facilitate the rezone? Or they've since seemed short-sighted in retrospect, would you say?
I don't think I could comment on that. I think fundamentally, it comes down to is, is the zoning appropriate or not? And if you ask me, I'd say, you can't really rezone something to, a zone that doesn't implement the comprehensive plan, right? So you can't be in one and two families, I want this to be B3. But if you make, if you amend the comp plan map, the 2040 land use plan map, and then to a zone that, or to, excuse me, a designation that allows a zone to implement into that, then technically, you're following what the plan says. Now, if you have the land use plan map with little pockets of different designations, that might be an indication of a bigger issue. Or if you have, in any case, I guess that's what I would say, because that's also what maybe has, has happened in certain cases. The Spinnard Tower, for example, it's a tiny square of a very specific type of land use designation. And well, the SL, if I recall, was related to design and that sort of thing, to sort of accommodate that. And, and again, it, it doesn't really matter what I think, it's, it's whether the zone implements the plan and whether the Assembly or the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that. So it's hard to say if, to what ends they were being used, or if they were being successful or not.
Okay. See, no more questions for staff. So we will move to the public hearing. Please state your name for the record, and let us know if you're speaking for yourself or on behalf of a group.
Yes, sir. My name is Luke Smith. I am a resident here. I'm speaking on my own behalf, not as a business or any entity like that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
A few questions I did have for the real estate side of this. I see that the special limitations are subject to certain properties and such. A lot of them I see outdated. If this tool were to stay, would those SLs be revised and maybe relooked at? I understand that the safety reasons of having a house on hillside and stuff like that is subject to more safety concerns because of higher winds, worse weather, et cetera. So I, I would probably go to say that it would be a good idea to look over those older SLs and see if maybe that there could be some revisions in that as far as safety and wellness. And that, no further questions.
Thank you. And to, just to answer your question, no, this would not change the existing SLs, or that would be something that the property owners would need to apply for a rezone, to rezone the SLs off their property.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Is anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we have two phone testimonies. Right, so we're ready for those.
It is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for public testimony on case 2024-124.
Very good.
Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
I'm representing Rabbit Creek Community Council.
Okay, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please state your full name for the record, and you can begin.
Yes, my name is Nancy Peace, representing Rabbit Creek Community Council. I hope you received Rabbit Creek's written comments by email this afternoon. You'll see that Rabbit Creek raised several concerns and questions and voted unanimously to oppose the ordinance and thereby retain the use of special limitations. I'll summarize five concerns from Rabbit Creek. First, the lack of evidence that special limitations have been misapplied. There are numerous special limitation zonings in the Rabbit Creek area and across the hillside that pertain to inadequate infrastructure and natural terrain conditions, such as lack of secondary eagles or steep slopes. Second, the council disagreed with a staff memo describing the removal of an SL as unnecessary and burdensome, through an ordinance, as unnecessary and burdensome. Special limitations are not lightly approved, and they should not be lightly removed. Third, the staff raised the issue of transparency. And we find that parcels with SLs are clearly marked on muni zoning maps, and that is not true of plat notes or effective clauses or conditions of approval. So in some ways, SLs are far more obvious to the public than other conditions of approvals. Our council's highest concern for transparency is whether the commission and the staff use an open and fair process on a controversial rezoning case. So what we look for is robust analysis of both the proposed development and the comp plan, full public notice and participation, and no ex parte influence. It's not clear to us whether SLs are more or less incorruptible than other means to solve, to solve a complex rezoning decision. We'd like an audit of the planning toolbox regarding how, how and when to use special limitations and effective clauses and so on. Fourth, this is perhaps our greatest concern, that under the pressure of a flagging local economy, without SLs, there would be higher likelihoods for approvals of rezoning that do not comply with a comprehensive plan, and that create more pressure for piecemeal amendments to the comp plan, which defeats the intention of zoning. Given the choice between SLs and repeated area-wide rezoning through text amendments, SLs appear to us to be a means to protect the overall comp plan from dismemberment. Fifth, and this is sort of a stealthy element in this proposal, the planning memo asserts that special limitations should be applied only for reasons of safety, health, and public welfare. And this is a major policy statement that doesn't comport with the comp plan. Multiple adopted plans and policies commit to building a well-designed city that embraces our natural setting and northern climate and fosters distinctive neighborhoods. Consider Chapter 2 of the 2040 Land Use Plan, which talks about creating great places. There are two pages, 34 and 35. They're intended to guide discretionary land use decisions such as rezonings or site plan reviews. So in conclusion, I'd like to lift a metaphor. I'm hoping that some of you are committed gardeners, as am I. You know that for long-range growing, such as an orchard, you lay out your pattern, you plant your trees, and then it takes time to bear fruit. You don't disrupt the zone of your orchard by planting a redwood tree or a magic bean stalk in it. But if there's a rezoning application for the orchard, for trees or beans, you could consider it, make it work through special limitations, such as a dwarf spruce or low growing bush beans. So in conclusion, special limitations can continue to be a useful rezoning tool, and we urge an audit of all of the conditions of approval for rezoning to ensure transparency and consistency with the comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I disconnected, I'm sorry. Should I call back? Is there questions? I apologize.
I don't, I see no questions. Are there any questions for testimony for Mrs. Peace? We have no questions, but maybe you could send her a note to say thank you.
This is Diane.
Hello, is this Diane Holmes?
Yep.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for public testimony, case 2024-0124. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
I'm speaking for myself.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please state your full name for the record, and you may begin.
Thank you. I'm Diane Holmes. This AO before you originally had waived your review, and I'm glad that that did not occur. However, the short timeframe has not allowed many councils nor individuals to provide you with comments. Although the few that who have commented, Weddleton and Rabbit Creek Council are in your packet, and I believe are worthy of their reading. Mostly, though, I'm disappointed in the staff report, which hasn't provided you with views you may wish to consider, and in my opinion, does not reflect certain assessments accurately. I'll expedite a few key arguments as to why you should keep this useful tool. SLs do not keep properties from developing. Rather, a rezone can be viewed as being able to do more with a parcel with an SL, such as more intense development, while furthering the comp plan goals and mitigating adverse impacts. Consider the compatibility of adjacent land uses for each rezone, as well as other challenges, and how SLs may provide options. Is there really a basis for SLs based only on safety, health, and public issues, welfare? I think there's much more to consider. While current SLs may not have their AOs listed on all plat maps, making some mystery, there is no reason to delete them as the city is working to correct that situation. The zoning map helps provide certainty for long-term investment and neighborhood stability, yet without the possibility of SLs, there could be more haphazard zoning map amendments, which defeats the purpose of zoning. Without SLs, P&amp;Z would likely end up denying more rezones.
Without SLs, P&amp;Z would likely end up denying more rezones or applying them out of compliance with the comp plan. So please keep this planning tool. And I wish you could ask for the real reasons as cases before you. However, since the staff report recommended removing the SLs, I know they cannot always speak freely, and that sometimes is unfortunate because I know they have different opinions. And thank you very much for considering this, I've been listening to what you've been saying.
Thank you. I see no questions. Anybody else wishing to come forward and testify? Last call for public testimony. Okay, we closing the public hearing. So now we are at the tricky part where we can actually just walk away from this, or we can make a motion. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, not ready to make a motion. Appreciate that you're trying to get us there. I would actually, if you're okay with it, like to hear from staff as to what progress they think they can make over the next two weeks, understanding we convene in early December. Appreciate that they have started to take a look, it sounds like we'll continue to do so. Before I plant my own seeds for what I'd like to see, I'll let staff respond as to my question.
Through the chair, do you mean a report, a comprehensive report of all the SLs and what they contain?
I do not. I'm intending to ask how far you think you'll get with whatever effort it is you're on, and perhaps we can have some discussion about what other commissioners would like to see.
I guess I'll start and then, so we've started, Land Use Review is already looking through, and they're just trying to get all the ordinances up. But that, I think, will take until next year, probably, probably January or so. For going through the rest of the reviews, and to be honest, it's going to be a very interesting project, so it's not like we don't want to do it. We're, because we have a couple of other items we'd like to bring before you in, not this exact way, but something similar, the B3 and the multifamily residential. I don't think we would get very far on that. I could give you everything we have, I could give you the document that has the 545 from 1980s to 2001. I could send that very easily, but I'll defer to the director.
Through the chair, I would agree that we do not have time within the next two weeks to give you a comprehensive view of SLs, but we can provide you with the materials that we have discovered so far if you would like us to do so.
Commissioner Krista.
Sure, I have sort of a different request that maybe will also benefit us and the Assembly's review of this, which is, you know, would it be possible to do a couple pages on what's possible with SLs, what's possible with, you know, the words "effective clauses", what that means? And then I'm looking at page three of our packet, recommended alternatives to special limitations. My fear, and I, if you want to respond, please do, is making sure that we do some review at this point to make sure that we don't swap SLs for a different tool where we're doing the same thing, right? Where we're saying, oh, well, now we'll just switch to using deed restrictions or conditions to also, you know, require landscaping buffers and limit density or whatever we could be doing through SLs, right? So I guess I would love to see a discussion of what is and isn't possible with those different tools to make sure that we're not just taking off one thing and then leaving three other options by which we could still apply code unfairly, right? That would be my main concern, because if so, if it turns out that all of the things that we have been using SLs for are still possible through all of these other methods, and I would assume that this body or a future body might just revert to doing those. So I think that would be my main concern, and I wonder if that's something that we can do an analysis of in the next couple of weeks.
Excuse me, through the chair, I think we could put something together, but right off the bat, I think I'd say that, you know, all those tools already exist, right? So people would already do that. I think the difference is, is a lot of those require a different type of contract or a different type of agreement, whereas an SL comes out of a very different process, and it sort of exists in a way that most people might not be familiar with or even know to look for it. Whereas a plat, I mean, a lot of people don't know what a plat is, unfortunately, but people, a plat note is an understood thing. But also, to get a plat note, you go through the plating board, so we have these procedures to do a lot of that. And again, I think some of those procedures are in place to serve, you know, a health, safety, welfare need. And again, health, safety, welfare is the basis of zoning, according to the Supreme Court. And so my immediate response would just be kind of that, you know, covenants, sometimes they're unattractive to some people, but they're private contracts, right? And deed restrictions also, and I think that's maybe the thing with SLs, they're created in a way where it's sort of contingent upon somebody getting an approval for something, whereas a deed restriction or a plat note or something else is created through a different type of process, which requires a sort of different type of contract. But I think we could put something like that together. But at the same time, you know, those are all existing tools, and I don't think we would go far to say we want to limit any of those tools. I think much of what we, maybe what I was trying to say in any of this is, there are ways to do this already, and so if there really is a need for some of these things, there are other tools we may just not need to duplicate, but...
I guess to clarify, I have maybe the opposite concern of Commissioner George, which is, I want to make sure that if we are considering removing this tool, that it is actually well and truly removed, right? That there's not a backdoor way that this body or a future body could end up doing the same things with a different tool, and that's what I'm really asking for clarification on.
Through the chair, if I may, I think we can send you clarification on the effective clauses and conditions and use of special limitations, if that's what you're asking for. And then in addition to that, I think just summarizing that our investigation so far into SLs is considering if this is, if this is an appropriate use of a zoning action.
Commissioner George.
Thank you, through the chair, I appreciate Commissioner Krista's point, and I think it's an excellent point. Excellent case would be, I have a real estate listing right now with, that has a recorded change of plat notes through assembly ordinance, Assembly Resolution 2000-10, which changed buffer setbacks, creek setbacks, all that stuff can be changed by the assembly on a plat note, and we have plating board powers, I believe, at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We could sit as the plating board if we wish and amend a plat note and put a plat note restriction on if we wished. I mean, is that, that's probably more transparent than an SL, because I believe that it has to be recorded. One of the biggest critiques, I think, is that oftentimes these are not recorded, and does, does the department have the power to see how many SLs have been recorded, and if they're not recorded, record them?
I think that would take a lot of investigating per property and in town, so that would be a pretty big effort, but we can maybe attempt to discover that through coordination with the department, with DNR.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The concern being that SLs don't necessarily show up in title report.
Okay, we're not making motions and not talking, since there's no requirement to make a motion on this item, it was somewhat informational, we can just move on. We have the option to postpone. I know that there are some reports to be given after this. Commissioner Eber.
I was going to throw this out there. I think if we don't say something, that the Assembly is going to get just as frustrated with us as they were when we dealt with the home initiative. So I don't know what we should do or what direction we should go, but that disconnect the last time was pretty frustrating, I think, for all of us, so maybe it's just something to consider.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yeah, just, maybe it's a question for staff, a timing clarification. I thought I had heard that under the current schedule, that this wouldn't be next picked up by the Assembly until after our December meetings, is that correct?
Through the chair, yeah, it's scheduled to be back for a public hearing on December 17th, and the next Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are December 2nd and December 9th. Thank you.
A motion by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Krista. Commissioner Gardner, would you like to state your motion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm putting this on the table just for discussion, but my motion is to move, I guess, to postpone making a decision on this case until our December 9th meeting to allow the planning department to provide some additional information that we had discussed with them. And I guess open to other specific items that commissioners are interested in hearing about. I know we discussed maybe a better understanding of some of the alternatives that were provided in the report, and I think, I would be curious to know, too, I think there was some discussion about improving kind of the ability to identify special limitations, and maybe some more information as to what that process looks like and what expected outcomes might be.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Commissioner Ron.
Appreciate the commissioner's motion to postpone, I intend to support that. I would add to that list of desired items, a little more knowledge to the extent that it's feasible to be presented to the commission around the functionality of existing SLs to, as code currently states, require the construction and installation of improvements, including public improvements. And the nature of that request is in interest of the upside of SLs, so not limited to just that element, but others perhaps like it. While I appreciate the discussion around existing code being updated to negate the element of mitigating adverse effects of development under certain natural environment conditions, would request that the department continue to look at that and just make sure they've answered that one thoroughly. There may be some instances where code hasn't fully covered that ability, and SLs are in effect what's making the right thing happen or would make the right thing happen. And I would also ask the department if they could come forward with proposed language changes to SLs in the code. If there's an, you know, interest by the commission to not yea or nay this in total, but rather adjust the language in a different way and propose that to the Assembly in doing so, I would like to see the department's take on that, again, with the interest of further enabling development where it makes sense and not, not overhandily restricting it. Thanks.
I also intend to support the motion to postpone and would appreciate, there's a section in the packet referring to other jurisdictions, mention of a few in Washington, something in Arizona with some similar items. I guess my question is, how many jurisdictions do not have anything like an SL? And I'm just curious, the way, I mean, this reads, it would seem that we're a minority in the, in the SL department with a few other similar cases, but nobody else having SLs other than the jurisdictions that we know copied our code. So if we could get a little more background on what is standard planning practice, that would be great. Thanks. Seeing no one else in the queue, call for the vote.
Forgot one.
Just to be clear, oh, here is the actual motion we are voting on.
Commissioner Strike.
A question, it was my understanding that we were postponing, there it is, it just popped up.
Correct, postponing to the December 9th meeting.
Correct, then I vote yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to reports. Commissioner Winchester.
So I serve on the Community Advisory Committee for AMATS, it's a seat that Planning and Zoning occupies. We haven't met for about the last half year due to staff constraints, but they will reform that committee in 2025. I just wanted to point out that AMATS Policy Committee has a meeting on Thursday, 11:21, at 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock, 8th floor City Hall, or on Teams, the agenda is currently posted on AMATS website. AMATS also is working on tip amendment number three and MTP amendment number one, and there should be a public comment period in early 2025. If anyone on the commission or in the audience has a question, you can ask me, and happy to update you.
I think that takes care of all our reports, and I believe we were going to discuss the Planning and Zoning Commission case number FYI under Section J, Title 21 discussion. This is a handout you received November 15th to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mrs. Bab, would you care to speak to this?
Through the chair, I don't have a formal presentation to give you on the FYI memo, but I am hoping to introduce this as a item that will be on your agenda in some form or another from this point forward. We were here at the last meeting, I was listening, and I would like to keep you as informed as possible about any Assembly actions regarding Title 21, and also give you a formal vehicle for requesting information from the planning department for introduction during meetings.
Thank you. And are there any commissioners that would like to take this time to ask questions of the the director or staff? Commissioner Ron, lining up.
Thank you, through the chair, not a question, just a simple thanks and commendation for this memo in total, and also for the department in bringing forward case 2024-0124, which we just heard. And I hope that the commission's action is looked at more than just giving the department more work to do, but exemplifying the process and improving upon it, so, thank you.
Commissioner Gardner.
That's exactly what I was just gonna say, so nothing further from me, thank you.
Commissioner George.
Exactly the same as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Krishna.
I have a question, but I also want to say thank you. This is wonderful, and I really appreciate it. My question, and I'm not gonna put you on the spot here, but I'm gonna maybe ask that the department think about this and bring us back and answer at our next meeting, is just, if we do choose to hear an item or make a recommendation on an item that, we have the option to do so, what could we then expect, right? Would we, could we ask for a staff report? Could we ask for a presentation? Could we ask an Assembly representative to come here and make that presentation to us? A little bit of guidance on what that might look like, so that process goes smoothly would be helpful.
Through the chair, Commissioner Krishna, thank you for the question, we'll look into that and get back to you.
I see no speakers in the queue, so I will just echo the thank you. All righty. Any commissioner comments before we entertain a motion to adjourn? Now accepting verbal motions to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner, pull a second to my Commissioner Winchester, you were almost there, Commissioner Strike, thanks for hanging in there. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.